This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Councilman Reed is also absent today. We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we just thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We thank you for the freedom to be here and to meet. We thank you for your blessings on Gadsden. And God, we thank you for protecting us through the storms last night. God, we just pray that we'll keep our focus and our attention pointed towards you. I pray that you'll give wisdom to this council today with the decisions they have to make. I'll ask that you'll give your wisdom and knowledge to our mayor and his administration as they continue to lead this city. God, we just want to be pleasing to you in everything we do and we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the City Council meeting held on October the 8th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chairman, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of October the 3rd through the night.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
What happened to the mayor?
He is.
I can see through you. You had him hid.
I blanked him.
I'd like to ask Rebecca Tinker, is she here?
Yes.
She is back there. Oh, she is. Okay. And Dr. Foster?
Good morning.
Whereas in 1921, a group of civic-minded business leaders established an international service organization in Macon, Georgia. The founding members combined their diverse talents in friendship and service to improve the quality of life in communities throughout the world. Pilot International is comprised of almost 400 clubs and over 8,000 members worldwide. Pilot International is committed to service in areas of youth development and leadership, brain safety and fitness, and caring for families in times of need. Members of Pilot International strive to further the organization's humanitarian efforts through grants and scholarships to support research, education, community, and caregiving programs. Pilot International partners with Safe Kids Worldwide, Care International, Project Lifesaver, and other respected service organizations to promote awareness for injury prevention and care for those in need. Pilot International fosters volunteerism in more than 8,000 young people worldwide through our sponsorship of anchor clubs. The pilot clubs throughout the world are dedicated to meet the needs of their communities through volunteerism. Therefore, it is fitting that the achievements and contributions of this worldwide organization, its clubs and members, be recognized on their anniversary by proclaiming October 18, 2014, as Pilot International Day and Pilot International Founder's Fun Day in the City of Gadsden, 14th day of October, 2014.
Thank you Mayor Guyton and the city for issuing this proclamation. I'm Rebecca Tinker, membership chairperson of the Pilot Club of Gadsden, and my counter-comrade, who was standing here shyly, Dr. Portia Foster, who is our club president. And we don't pilot airplanes, but we do pilot, we do give pilot leadership in improving the quality of life. For all of you who are on the City Council, or those of you who are remaining, those of you who are leaving, we want you to know that we provide services to the citizens of Gadsden and all the districts, and also in the county. One of our signature projects is Project Lifesaver, and we pair with the Etowah County Sheriff's Department. We provide tracking bracelets to Alzheimer's patients, to children with autism, with referrals from physicians and family members. We provide that at no charge and also change the batteries out. The Sheriff's Department has the tracking devices, and if someone is lost, they can usually be found in less than 30 minutes. So, we want you to consider us when you have access to your discretionary funds. Thank you very much. (Laughter)
Ms. Tink, if you guys, Ben is not here, so I can't challenge him today, but I think probably one of your largest fundraisers was the day we had the beauty and talent contest with no ladies involved. And we were all dressed up as ladies. Of course, Ben drove to the meeting, or to the talent show, in his dress. I wasn't that brave. I don't think, I don't know if he could explain that had he been stopped by the police department. But I do know that was one of the great fundraisers, and I really enjoyed that. And hopefully, you guys can put that on again and get some of these new council members who's coming on board to participate in that, because you guys do a great job. And I do know of several instances where people with Alzheimer's have been lost and thanks to the Pilot Club, they were able to find them within a short period of time. So, we really appreciate you guys and thank you for your service. Yeah. And I'm, no, I'm not. I start to say I'm open again to participate, but no, I'm not. I don't think I want to go through that again. You don't want on your resume, you won a beauty pageant, a womanless beauty pageant, or Miss Congeniality, or Miss whatever. I don't think that, I want that on my resume.
You know, Robert, I'm so glad, I'm so glad that I didn't run up on you and Ben Reed in a dress. I wouldn't have known what to say. I would've said, I wouldn't have known what to say.
I burned all the videos.
Whoa, y'all have done disservice to the human race.
I didn't get to go to that, but I heard that was the two ugliest women you'd ever had.
I'll accept that. I mean, like I said, you don't want that on your resume that you won that contest.
Unfinished business, a resolution ordering abatement and nuisance on property located at 3401 Madison Avenue in District 6. Last known owner is Chris Baker. Resolution was tabled for 14 days on September the 30th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to abate, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement and nuisances on property located at 101 Hillside Circle in District 1. The last known owner was Garden Villas LLC. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. As we discussed in pre-council, and based on the new owner being involved in this property, I'm going to ask that this case be tabled for 120 days. It involves an apartment complex in East Gadsden, totaling 96 dwelling units, and we're asking for this additional time for the architectural work to be done, and then the contractors to be brought on board, and hopefully to see some great improvement in this much-needed area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to it? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it? What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, based upon the recommendation from the Building Department, I'm asking for a 120-day delay on this project.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 120 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
And Mr. President, may I also say that under discussion, these are the garden terrace apartments over on Litchfield Avenue, and I think that's a great thing that's going to happen for us in the East Gadsden area, the City of Gadsden and District 1. As you all know, that has been an eyesight, I saw, a nuisance to the people in that area for eight, nine, 10 years now, and we're getting something done about it. So I think we'll all be glad, and we can all appreciate what's about to happen in East Gadsden.
The next three are resolutions. Public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement and nuisances on property at 3307 25 Georgia Avenue, 2501 Norris Avenue, and 2505 Norris Avenue. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these three? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of any of these three?
Mr. President, I'm a little confused. Are we having all three?
At the same time, Brian. We're doing all three at the same time. You can just pass all three pictures to us.
I will.
That'd be fine, if you've got them all there together. We've already got a discussion on them. I think when they see the pictures, they're going to vote with me. If they don't, there's something wrong with them. I just go ahead and tell them that now.
Concerning 3307 Georgia Avenue, we began our case there in January of this year. There have been no improvements, nor permits to improve. 2501 Norris Avenue is a burned structure, actually burned twice. We started the case as a condemnation case in January of 2013. It's burned twice since then. And then immediately next door, separated by a vacant lot, is 2505 Norris Avenue, which also burned. We started our case in February of this year, and we're asking for a resolution to abate all three nuisances. Thank you.
Let me chime in on this. The first one there, 3307 Georgia Avenue, you can see that the owners have taken all the windows out of the houses, all the doors out of the houses. It's basically just standing there with nothing in it. It's just an old shell of a structure there that cannot be revisited. We cannot fix that house. The best thing to do before it, a good wind comes, it'll blow it down. We've got someone interested, once the city tears it down, and buying the property already on that piece of property there. That's why we need to do that one. 2501 and 2505 Norris Avenue, like Mr. Harbison said, one of them's burnt, and the other one caught fire also too. One's burnt twice. There's nothing been done to either pieces of these three properties right here, but vandalism's been in there, and they've set them on fire, went on Norris twice. I did speak with the owner at 2501 Norris Avenue. He was here right when I walked in today, the council meeting. I told him we was going to abate the nuisance, we was going to push the house down. He told me, just don't push it down, that he would start in the morning. He's getting a permit, as of speak today, to start on the morning on demolition, and I told him we was going ahead and abate all three nuisances, so we better hurry and start pushing this piece of property down. If you live in District 6, your house has been condemned, it's been condemned six, eight months, or a year. You know you're not going to do anything with it. There's no use coming up here asking for more time. You're just wasting your time and the city's time by trying to give you more time. The citizens of District 6 deserve better than what we've been giving them, and so now we're going to start taking action. We're going to start pushing all these houses down, if I can get these guys to agree with me. We can have the public hearings on everyone, like we're supposed to, but when you come up here, you're going to have to have a good reason why something hadn't been done, because District 6 is houses that needs to be torn down, and it's going to be torn down. And saying all that, I make a move, we abate all three of these nuisances.
You go, Johnny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for all three of these. Would you take the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three resolutions.
Johnny, this way I saw that demolition crew headed this morning toward Alabama City.
It's going to get there quick. Y'all better just get on the same bandwagon, y'all going to be left behind.
They're sitting there with, the mayor said, the mayor said they're sitting there idling now, just waiting on us to finish this.
13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with S&amp;M E Incorporated. This is for environmental services, including monthly explosive gas monitoring and semi-annual groundwater monitoring at the city's closed sanitary landfill. This is for the fiscal year 2015, in the amount of $43,300. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
14 is a resolution authorizing agreement with S&amp;M E Incorporated. This is for the one-time gas monitoring event and monthly storm water monitoring at the city's C&amp;D landfill during fiscal year 2015. The amount is $12,800. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
These are two things that we are required to do every year. As long as we have a landfill, we have, EPA makes us monitor them like this, so it's money we have to spend every year.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the results of the provisional ballots.
Thank you, Mr. President. We received a report from the Etowah County Board of Registars. They are charged with investigating and reviewing all provisional ballots and giving us a report as to which one should be counted. There are seven that I will proceed to open at this time.
We had one item of new business I thought we were going to bring up. Should we do it?
That's next.
Okay, next.
And I've asked my assistant to help tally these for me. It's hard to read them out and know what we're doing, to keep up with the totals. This is one vote for Billy Billingsley. One vote for Bill Stewart. One vote for Billy Billingsley. One vote for Billy Billingsley. One vote for Billy Billingsley. Is that seven? And you have the resolution before you that declared the municipal election results, and we will add these totals to the resolution, and then it will stand adopted. We, the total was for, six for Billy Billingsley and one for Bill Stewart, so we will add those to the grand totals of the election.
This resolution is certifying the election results. This declares that Billy F. Billingsley, Sr., received the majority of the votes cast in the October 7 runoff election for the office of council member for District 5, and is declared elected to that office for the term beginning the first Monday in November 2014. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Bill is back here at this time. If you want to, yeah, we do want to recognize you. Don't be holding your hand up. Mr. Billingsley, would you please stand up so we can, so you can be recognized? Thank you, sir.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider at the time. This is a resolution accepting the assignment of the trademark regarding Gadsden Riverfest from the Chamber, so I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is a formality. As you know, the Chamber has had some concerns about Riverfest, and we're looking at a number of groups, or a particular group, and I think some other individuals who might be interested in proceeding with Riverfest. And so this is just a formality for us to get that name back, so we can continue to attach it to whatever festival or whatever we decide to do down the road in the future.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Thank you, Council President. I'm Kay Moore, Director for Downtown Gadsden, and yes, I'll be short because I know everybody's hungry, as am I, so. I've got a couple of things coming up I just want to let everyone know about. This is the final third Thursday for 2014. We have Third Thursday from May through October, and so this October 16th, which is Thursday night, will be our final third Thursday. It's from 6 to 8 o'clock in October. Because it gets dark more quickly, we do move inside the Pittman Theater. We'll have Del Nora Reed, who is, she's from Nashville. She's probably been here since the inception of Third Thursday, when it started out with the Center for Cultural Arts. So, she's a favorite of the people who come to this event, and she's kind of a country, folksy girl that has a long history of family and music. So, she's got a beautiful voice, a sweet spirit, and everybody that comes really does enjoy that. So, it's a free concert Thursday night in the Pittman from 6 to 8 o'clock with Del Nora Reed. That's the one, the last one for this year, and then we'll start again next year. Then next Tuesday night, if you haven't heard, you know, the events that we offer in downtown Gadsden are primarily all free to come to. So, we do have a major fundraiser, which will be next Tuesday night. We will be closing the Memorial Bridge at 3 o'clock to set up for that. It's called Sunset Sips. It's just a fun time where you can stand on the bridge and kind of talk to your friends, and it's not a sit-down. We do have heavy hors d'oeuvres by the fish market, and Back 40, and the stone market provides some beverages, frios, gourmet pops, we'll have some frozen treats. But it's just a fun time. Tickets are $40. You do, it is a donation primarily for downtown Gadsden. The first year we did it, we put up the banners, the Shop, Sip, Eat, Play, and Learn banners on Broad Street. Last year, we used it as the means to purchase the speakers, that now you can hear music as you walk down Broad Street. We've got a couple, we've thought around a couple of different ideas yet, we don't know for sure yet, but you know, we usually make about, you know, $5,000 or $6,000, and we spend it back into the community. So, tickets are $40. The last day to purchase these tickets is Friday. And so if you are interested, let us know, and we'll put your name on them. We're just thankful to the Public Works, to the Police Department for helping us with that, to the city for allowing us to close the bridge. We know it can be an inconvenience, so for those who are listening, 3 o'clock on Friday, the Memorial Bridge will be closed until about 8 o'clock, excuse me, on Tuesday until 8 o'clock that night. So, but it's a lot of fun, so if you'd like to come, we'd welcome you to do that. Thanks to our major sponsors, BBVA Compass and the Gadsden Times for all that they do for us. So, Downtown Dance Conservatory will do a little dance there. We try to do a little entertainment different every year. The first year we had Mimes, and then last year we had something different. This year, Big Sam the Balloon Man was there last year, so he saw all these adults walking around with these balloon hats. The Downtown Dance Conservatory is going to do a little short performance for us, and then Buster will be playing his great jazz. So, if you're interested, let us know. Call us at the office, 256-547-8696, and we'll be glad to give you more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other remarks by the mayor and the council? Johnny, you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to recognize my pastor, Roger Collins, he's in the back, back there. I do appreciate you coming today, Pastor Collins. He's sitting in the very back. You want to stand up and let everybody see you? He's not only my pastor, he's a good friend of mine. You can't say that about a lot of people, but he's a real good friend of mine. Also, I want to remind everybody that this is the third Saturday in Alabama City at the gazebo. We'll have hot dogs. Curly will be there again, so Robert, everybody can enjoy good hot dogs this Saturday. Curly will be there cooking them. Silver Dollar Bill will be singing. There's another guy going to sing. I can't think what their name is, but they're both really good. Also, trick-or-treats on Wall Street for the kids will be October 30th from 5 to 7. We'll have the streets closed off. The police will be down there. Be a safe environment for everybody to come, just bring your children out. October 30th from 5 to 7 in Alabama City and Wall Street. That's going on. Just everybody, I want to remind everybody that this Friday is Gadsden City Homecoming. Do you know what time the Homecoming Parade starts? 1 o'clock. Homecoming Parade starts at 1 o'clock, be down Broad Street. Everybody make sure you attend that, and the big game will be at 7 o'clock that night. Probably the home facilities start at probably 6, I'm guessing, that night. 6 or 6:30 before the game. 5, Billy says. So, everybody make sure you go out to that. It should be a good game. Root your team on, that we're doing really good this year. I'm so proud of what they've done this year. That's all I've got.
All I've got to say is after 16 years, free at last.
Announcement, my district meeting will be this Thursday. It'll be my last district meeting. So, 5 o'clock at Carver Community Center this Thursday. Please, ma'am, please, sir, come out. We'll be glad to have you out for the meeting. Several things, and hopefully the new elected council member, hadn't talked with him, but hopefully he'll show up and continue the tradition of having a district meeting every month in the district. This Friday is Gadsden City's Homecoming, but I would like to put an extra note to that, they'll be playing Hazel Green. In this past week, last Monday as a matter of fact, one of the football players there at Hazel Green committed suicide. He was Coach Jones. Most of you probably don't know Coach Jones, who was at Alabama A&amp;M University. It was his son. I understand that Gadsden City might be looking to do something, but keep that family in your prayers, Coach Jones and his wife and his other children. The young man was a star football player in 11th grade, and he was looking to go to a major SEC team. Six foot five, 240 pounds, and I'm not sure what his problem was, but keep that family in your prayers. And of course, when you come out to the game on Friday night, always, I mean, remember that family, remember that player from Hazel Green that won't be there this time around. I did know the young man, and it's kind of hard to deal with. That's all.
Really?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're thankful that the severe weather that was all around us yesterday and last night did not affect us here in the City of Gadsden, so we're just thankful and prayed up that that happened, and that those persons who were affected by the severe weather, we will continue to pray for them and keep them in our prayers. will continue to pray for them and keep them in our prayers. Now, it's just another thing to show, another, well, another incident to show how important it is that we have these safe places in the City of Gadsden and Etowah County. I think we were at a meeting yesterday, Shane, the chief, Johnny and myself, and we are going, there are monies out there to build safe, safe, safe houses for tornadic-type weather, and we are certainly trying to get some of that money. You know, it seems like most of those incidents occur out in the county, but we as a city are requesting money to be spent for places within the city limits of Gadsden, so that where there's dense population, unsuitable housing, a trailer park, or whatever, people will have a safe place to go when we're predicting bad weather. So, we're looking forward to that process being completed, and we have some place for people to go within the city limits of Gadsden. There are places that you can go to. They're not FEMA certified, but they're safer than your home, and all you have to do is call EMA, and they can tell you where those places are. Or you can call the city clerk's office, or the mayor's office, they can tell you where those places are that you can go to in the event that we're having bad weather. Power Club, thank you for what you do in the city and the county. Thank you very much. It's good to see people come up and receive recognition for something that they're doing that's worthwhile, you know, in our community. We appreciate you all, and we wish you all the best in the future. River Fest, I encourage, we have now gotten the trade name River Fest transferred back to the city, or it never really left the city. River Fest is a big event. It's big all over the state of Alabama, all southeast. It's one of the biggest events that happens. But we understand the need for change, and the Chamber of Commerce, you know, is not going to sponsor anymore, but we have individuals who are going to want to undertake this project to make sure that it continues in the City of Gadsden. I urge everyone to continue to work, to work with whatever group that comes in, and support us having River Fest under a new, a revised edition in the future. River Fest needs to continue in the City of Gadsden. It's too big of an event, it draws people from all over the southeast, and we need to, we just need to make sure that that continues to happen. And as I said, the Garden, Garden Terrace Apartments, you don't, you just don't know how elated I am that we have someone that's going to come in now and, and fix that blight in East Gadsden. It's just, it's just good that it's going to happen, and I really, we really appreciate it as a city, and as citizens of East Gadsden, we really do appreciate it. And those of you who are, who are coming out to, to city council meetings on Tuesdays, thank you for coming. We have, we have a contingency of people, you know, who are regular, attending these meetings every Tuesday, and we, majority of them from District One on a regular basis. But we thank you for coming. We thank, we appreciate you for being here and showing an interest in what's going on in your city, in your community, and, and the state. That being said, I will, I had said I wasn't going to have one, but I will have a final meeting next Monday night at East Gadsden Recreation Center at 6 o'clock. It'll be our final meeting, Carol, and we will go, we will be there to look at some expectations for the upcoming year, and to thank you all for your support over the past four years.
Billy, I think that Johnny is practicing to take your place in remarks by the mayor and the council, so.
Well, you know, brother Bob, you know, as long as he remains diligent, and, and his remarks are forth, forth worth, and, and they are meaningful, and they mean something to the city, Johnny, go for it.[1686.41][1686.41](LAUGHTER).
Well, you know, Billy, I appreciate all the kind words you said. And Mr. Eccles, all I can say for you is, there's four more years you're going to be here with us, and you've got to put up with four more years, because I'm going to take care of the people in District Six and this city. That's all I got.
I'll enjoy it too, Johnny.
But it has been, it has been a wonderful relationship. It really has. I can appreciate these guys, I can appreciate the mayor and, and his administration, but most of all, I can appreciate all the citizens of the City of Gadsden, because after all, you're, you're the reason that we're here, so we appreciate you.
Amen.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I'm going to tighten Johnny's bow tie up every week from now on out.[1735.41][1735.41](LAUGHTER). We do have another special visitor with us today. He's from Etala, but he does do a lot of charity work in Gadsden as well as Etala. Pastor Preston Nix, you want to stand up? Thank you for being here today.
Absolutely.[1753.01][1753.01](APPLAUSE).
And that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
Move adjourned.
Not anything else. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's many adjourned.[1763.11][1763.11](MUSIC)